Good morning. I'd like to welcome you this morning as Marshall County Board of Supervisors are meeting in regular session on this twenty-ninth day of November twenty sixteen at nine AM with all three members present in the courthouse northeast corner, room number two, third floor. And at this time, I'd like to ask you to please rise and join us within the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Just a notice to the public, the Board of Supervisors welcomes comments from the public during the time allowed for discussion. You are requested to approach the microphone, state your name for the record, and limit the time used to present your remarks in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. The normal process on any agenda item is for the chairperson to read the item from the agenda. The Board has given an opportunity to comment on the issue and/or place a motion on the floor. An opportunity for discussion may be presented at which time the public may participate in a roll call vote will follow. First item is the approval or the amendment of the agenda that has been presented.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the agenda as printed.
Mr. Chairman, I second that. A motion and a second, roll call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. Moving on to the consent agenda, item number two, approval of minutes from regular session of November fifteenth, twenty sixteen. Number three, accept twenty sixteen weed commissioner's report. Number four, accept a region six fiscal year twenty sixteen annual report. And item five, approve claims as audited and authorize the county auditor and recorder to issue payment the same. The listing of claims paid at this meeting will be included with all claims paid for the month of November. The November list of claims will be paid in part of the first meeting in December. I'd entertain a motion on our consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. Moving on to item number six, approve collective bargaining tentative agreements with Teamsters Local Two Thirty Eight Clerical and Deputy's Jailers and PPME Local Two Thousand Three Secondary Roads. I entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the collective bargaining tentative agreements with Teamsters Local Two Thirty Eight, which is clerical deputies and jailers, and PPME Local Two Thousand Three Secondary Roads.
Mr. Chairman, I would second this motion.
Right, we got a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. All right, moving on to item number seven, the award to contract twenty seventeen weed control spray program for Marshall County. Discussion and possible action on awarding the contract for the twenty seventeen weed control spray program for Marshall County. And since the bids were submitted, we've had one company that has withdrawn theirs, Midwest Air Spray, and which leaves us one, B&W Control Specialists. And John, if you want to say anything or not, we're familiar with both companies, and I would entertain a motion on this.
Nothing as to why they received their bid?
Yeah, that's important, I think. They checked, they got their new quotes for their insurance for this coming year, and because of the increased rate for doing roadside spraying, this is an aerial spraying company, they were going to do this to supplement what they did when they, before they got to the crop spraying season. So because their insurance rates went up at the rate which they did, they can't, they can't see any way to really make a profit, so they've decided not to continue through the process.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to award the contract to BMW Control Specialists in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty cents for the two thousand seventeen weed control spray program for Marshall County and authorize the chairman to sign.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion?
BMW is the company that has done our weed spraying in the past.
Correct.
Yep. And have we had any issues or reasons why we wouldn't go through this?
No, other than this would have been a local company.
Okay.
All right, with a motion and a second, followed by a discussion, roll call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. Moving on to item number eight, proposed amendment to zoning ordinance number three, discussion and possible action to accept or deny the recommendation of the zoning commission from the November fifteenth, twenty sixteen zoning commission's meeting. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, in following parliamentary procedures, I'll motion to place this item on the table for discussion. I'm going to motion that we accept the recommendation of the zoning commission, which is to deny the request.
We got a motion and a second.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all right. We'll open it up for discussion. And John, do you want to, anything you want to say, or?
The zoning commission recommended denial based upon, one, that the, the sign regulation for home occupations currently requires a two-square-foot minimum, or excuse me, maximum size, and the proposal would allow a thirty-two-square-foot maximum size, and they felt that was too many steps ahead in terms of increasing the size to go from a two-square-foot sign to something sixteen times larger. They also felt that the possibility for many, many signs to go up represented kind of a nuisance factor, that we would have home occupations with signs popping up all over, and that the proliferation of those signs would not be good for the aesthetics of the county.
Okay. Tom, you're on.
I actually have a couple things, I brought some other business owners in Marshall County here. First off, the explanation for the square footage of the signage, two-foot by, basically two-foot by two-foot sign is limited. It's a size of a garage sale sign, and on the roadwise, it would be perfect, you know, in town. Ask any police officer that's responded to a car accident, somebody being rear-ended because they're stopping to see that two-foot by one-foot sign, okay? Out in the county, we're allowed to put signs, it's twenty-five feet from the middle of the roadway, which is in a farm field. Two-foot by one-foot sign cannot be seen. I actually have videos of someone standing where this would be proposed, a two-foot by one-foot sign. You can't, the only thing you can see is the person standing. A four-foot by eight-foot, which is a piece of plywood, which is a thirty-two-square-foot sign, same thing, person holding it, you can actually read it from that distance, okay? With the ordinance is, is a requirement you get a lease from the farmer, the landowner of that property. The sign has to be adjacent to your property, it can't be ten miles the other way. So we're limiting what can be done to keep down the nuisance that John brought up. Because of the signage, you know, it's, we're out in the county, it's hard for people to find you anyway. With today's technology, GPS is great. Unfortunately, anyone that has a cellphone out in the county knows they drop signal often. So if you're driving down the highway, you've lost your signal, now where do you go? I actually had a couple people on our grand opening weekend, one from Omaha, one from the Quad Cities, they said they got into the area and then couldn't find me because their GPS quit working, okay? A signage in that area would help draw people in, not only for my business, but any small business out in the county. It helps promote them. If you guys would like to see the videos of the two signs, of the difference, okay? The one thing that the Board brought up was the nuisance. In this amendment, it actually says the sign owner must maintain the sign, cannot be in poor condition, can't be frayed material, cracked, faded, so it has to be maintained. So anyone that makes signs, like Scott, he does signs for people, it, I mean, it's not a cheap venture anyway, so the speculation of lots of signs out in the county, people are going to spend money to do these. So every little Jimmy home occupation business has been put, isn't going to be able to do that because it's costly to make these signs anyway, not just to, you know, and then to maintain them. And then the agreement with the landowners, I mean, that's going to be a big thing. The landowner's not going to want something that's frayed, you know, in bad shape, looking bad on his property or their property. That's, that's about all. I did want to bring this up. Prior to this amendment, I contacted John Coontz concerning this ordinance and asked him, because we are small businesses out in the county, we're trying to grow, and how would we go about doing this, and asked for his help to get this amendment put through. He offered his assistance and then turned around and then denied it at the last meeting. He never did give me a reason why. The board members, I actually asked why. We had one board member says, "We don't want change." Another board member suggested we need more research, and that's why we did the video of the signs, because that board member thought, you know, at that depth, you know, alongside the road, that thirty-two-square-foot was too big, and that was understandable. Now that we know where the signs would be located, thirty-two square feet doesn't seem too big when you're looking at that distance. And then the other board member thought it was a great idea, because we're trying to promote businesses in the county, to help the county grow. Our business, actually, I'm helping support Green Castle by offering different supplies. Other businesses out in the county are supporting our county and members within, so we just, that's about, that's all I have to say.
Just for point of clarification, it's not John Coontz, that the idea was his board.
Okay.
Scott?
As a business owner also, I have a safety aspect of it. I have people on S-curve where I live, I've almost been hit pulling my driveway, so you have people trying to slow down to see a sign. And I have my little two-foot by one-foot back away from the roadway, and I get constant customers asking, "Will you put a bigger sign?" You know, can't. I don't see the nuisance aspect of it. All these businesses are professional businesses that have spent money to put a good product or be professional. I really can't see how it can be denied. I do a lot of stuff for Marshall County. You know, I put a good product out there, I support Marshall County, I've donated to about any fundraiser there is. And I get people come up from Fort Madison to do business. You know, I have people from all over the state come to where I'm at. And I think it's, it would disappoint me greatly that after all I do donating for, you know, Harvest Ball, for Alzheimer's, for all the other fundraising stuff I do, that it would be turned down for what's going to be a, quote, nuisance, or you think it's a problem. These aren't hick businesses that are awful lean to, these are businesses that have spent a lot of money, and I think it should be approved for safety and for the businesses.
All right, thanks, Scott.
Your first and last name, you forgot?
Scott Nagbar, yeah.
Scott Nagbar.
Darwin, do you want to say names?
Um, yeah.
Say it's your name so Adam can get you down and put you in the paper.
You know, I went through this before, of course, you know, but, you know, as far as the, I guess what I can understand is, you know, you go to these, a lot of these other counties, you know, not close by, you see business signs, you know, and at their business. I guess that what I can understand is, you know, I'm sure they've got the rules and regulations too. And so what difference does it make, you know, I can see where you're coming from as far as the clutter type thing, but like Tom said, those signs have got to be in, you know, great shape all the time. So they're that way, they're not going to be clutter, you might call it, you know what I mean? Because those businesses, they want people, they look at the sign, it's a great-looking sign. Okay, that means that they care about that sign, they care about their business, you know, and they're out there making money, you know, for their counties, you know, and everything. You know, I've done a lot for, for Marshall County too, but you know what? I don't look at it as a, um, something I have to do, it's something I want to do for the county and for the people of Marshall County. So, I mean, I really think that it should be approved, I really do, and long as, you know, a lighted sign, it don't matter, you know, to me, because a lot of times, who's going to put, you know, run wire to it and hook it up electricity, you know, so, but, but I really think it should be approved, I really do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just a question, Steve, from a perspective of public safety, anything you want to chime in on, on these signs? I know when we've got portions of the year on some of our roads, when we've got our corn corners and nobody can see, let's throw a sign into that situation that might be placed on a corner and give us a visibility problem at an intersection.
I think, I think that'd be more appropriate for me than here, however, I think of the setbacks, unfortunately, I don't see the issue from the setbacks or set the reason to avoid those crash hindrances there.
Here's the, here's the problem I have, good, bad, or indifferent. We currently have an ordinance in place that the zoning board had taken, taken into effect, and they made their decision on what the current ordinance is. And I've always, since my years of being here, I've never went against what their, what that board has suggested. We put a board in place, we put reputable people on that board to represent Marshall County in various, various, at different aspects. I think I would, I would be wrong, I feel, to go against their decision. Now, does, does a larger sign possibly need to be put up? Need, does ordinance need to be changed? I guess that, I would leave that up to, to our board. But at this time, I cannot support what you're saying, and, and I'm, I've been a small business myself, and I know what you're saying, but our, the way the ordinance reads now, I'm going to have to support the way the ordinance says. Scott?
I feel we're falling behind. I believe surrounding counties don't have a problem with this. Is it because you just don't want to buck the trend?
No, there's no, there's no bucking the trend at all.
I mean, here's, here's, I asked straight of it. Okay, Tom did the research on this and did this. You know, you gotta have two-hundred bucks just to meet with these people. Got the money, go sit in there. He had to pass out the paperwork, they weren't even knowing what's going on, and then within a few minutes, we don't see any need to do that. There was no discussion, it's like, "Thanks for the two-hundred?" No, we don't need a change. I, you know, times change. We're trying to make things better. I want to see where it's easy for someone to find my place, Busby Meadery, another one that's two in a well, spent a lot of money, they're off the beaten path. Maybe someday if I get big enough, I'll buy a, a storefront and move it up here. Right now, we can't. I'm trying to start from the bottom and go up, I want to be seen. If sometime there's an accident out in front of my house, because they were trying to find my place, or see that sign, is it worth it?
No, no, an accident is not worth it. But you can, I think you can see where we're at right now with the ordinance in place, I, I will not go against what the ordinance already in place. Good, bad, or indifferent, you know?
I understand, I just don't see it on surrounding counties.
And, and again, maybe that's something that the zoning board needs to look at.
They've changed, they've changed multiple times, and, you know, I'm just really disappointed in your answer.
Well, all I'm doing, all, my answer is based on the, on the fact of what the ordinance is in place now, and again, maybe that ordinance needs to be changed, but at this point, this is all we have to, we all, that's all we have to work with.
What are the surrounding counties, John, that these guys are talking about? Is their ordinance in Harden, Jasper, Tama, and Story different than ours?
I'm sure it is, it's probably different from, in most counties unless they literally copied exactly what another county did. I have no idea what the specifics are on any individual county. I would like to answer a couple of things that Mr. Nagbar said. The, the commission members were given, they're given what are called case files, packets for each case that comes before them, they're emailed to them, and they can print them out if they feel they need them, and matter of fact, Ron Jakey had his, excuse me, had his with him. The other two simply didn't bring their packets with them, so they are given that information. The meeting was not over right away, it was a forty-minute-long meeting, most, most of which was consumed with this particular case, so they were given ample opportunity to speak on that.
Did any of the commission members want further study on this or more research done?
Pat Von Onen said that she thought maybe there should be some more investigation as to the size of the signs themselves. And the size, if that was all that this was about, would be one issue. This ordinance amendment is, that's only one part of, of what they were requesting. They're also requesting to put them off premises. So as long as it's on the same road as you live on, even if it's eight miles away, you can put a sign up, and there's no limit on the number, be any number of signs put up, just as long as you get a lease with some individual landowner. So the, this is not just the size of the signs, that was the real reason they seemed to feel, that and the proliferation of signage. And that's another thing I'd like to address with what they said about the nuisance issue. Never was it assumed that the signs themselves would be tacky or, or, you know, not well kept. That's not the nuisance, the nuisance is the proliferation of those signs. So they're not in any way inferring that the business owner wouldn't take care of their, of their signs.
John, there's, as you walk, I drive through the country, you do see large signs, eight by thirty-two, or thirty-two square feet, for a fertilizer company, or an elevator, or a church, how do they get their signs up then?
Well, and Tom and I had this discussion too, there are lots of different types of signs, so, for instance, agriculture in and of itself is completely exempt from zoning, so they could put up really any size sign they want. There's nothing that we can do about it because state law provides, prohibits us from imposing zoning regulations on agricultural activity. There are other signs, and each case we could go through, but this is, this ordinance would only apply to home occupations, which are very small businesses, usually done on less than fifty percent of the square footage of the first floor of the house.
See now, if this was written where it was one sign where Scott can have it at his place, and, you know, Darwin down at his where he's doing equipment repair, or you, just, just one sign out in front of their place of business, that's one thing, but multiples that you just mentioned, that's a completely different ballgame.
And that's, obviously, that's something that is not stated specifically in the ordinance, there's really nothing to prevent you from, from having more than one.
Except the cost. I think it'd have to be a thirty-one, hundred person that want to put up, you know, eight signs in eight miles or something like that.
How many signs do you have?
Yeah, but the devil's always in the details, Scott.
How many signs do I have? Two. One on the end of the road, because that's where the traffic is, and down gravel road. Okay? And one at the house.
And I'm sure Busby Meadery, you know, their thing is, if you guys would ever go to these businesses and check out, try to find them or see their small signs or whatever, but like Busby Meadery, they're about, not quite a mile off the road, so I could see one, you know, just off the highway there, and one at their house, you know, I, I don't think any of us are deliberately going to put a bunch of signs up for...
Are they able to, is, is he able to go back to the zoning commission and rework this, or is their decision done?
For this particular amendment, this is their decision.
Okay.
Then how do we go back to, do, is it, is it, is it a problem, or is it a, is it a, is it a way that we, they could go back to the zoning commission to see about getting the ordinance changed and signage increased? I, I think that's the issue, I, I think we need, we need to, I think they need to look at it, and there again, I can't speak for that board, but I, I think it'd be, it'd be to an advantage maybe to see what other counties have got.
The zoning commission's rules of procedure state that you cannot re-bring a case unless the information is now available that was not available when the original application was made.
The videos of the signage were not available, and that's probably one of the board members' questions, because she was concerned about the size of the sign, thinking it was on the side of the road versus the right of way. Also, concerning the signage, this ordinance was actually prepared by Marty Wymore, and his research involved the counties all around us and all throughout the state of Iowa. And there's only a few that stick with the two-foot by one-foot sign, or two-foot by two-foot sign. Everyone else has gone to the at least thirty-two square feet, and that's how we came up with a thirty-two square-foot sign, not by my personal preference or anyone else's personal preference. This is what other counties have gone with. So that's, that's why we chose that size versus anything else.
That's what it was based off of.
Yes.
Ask them for any more, or just ask them for one third?
Mm-hmm.
I invite you to, do I my S-curve?
I've been by your S-curve.
Can you read my sign?
I know where you live.
I invite you to read my sign. That sounds like a threat, right?
I'm more than willing to show you the video that I have of a two-foot by one-foot sign at fifty-five miles an hour, and the sign, same, same area, just with that square footage of the sign, same speed. The two-foot by one-foot sign, you see a person standing out in the field, you don't see the sign.
You're going fifty-five on your gravel road?
Um, I actually...
Steve, is, what's the speed limit on a gravel road?
No, this was actually on the Ferguson laptop, and it is fifty-five on a gravel road during the day. Anyway, but I have it recorded at fifty-five mile an hour, and they scan, and you don't see the two-foot by one-foot sign. Now, if, if, it was allowed a two-foot by one-foot sign, garage sale signs, you see it every Saturday morning, people, "Oh, okay, down the street."
That's a different, but I've never seen that happen.
You've never seen that? Okay.
No, I haven't.
Oh, your car, you're on the street.
And, I mean, it's, as a responder, I've seen it, not just in Marshall County, or Marshall Town, but out in the county, in the small towns that have garage sales, I've seen people slam on their brakes and, "Oh, I gotta go this way."
Well, in, in order to move this thing along, let's, again, I, I think, I guess I'd like to see the board look into a larger sign, you know, maybe look at what other counties got, rather than just what, what Grant has been, you know, like, looking it up. You, you kind of investigate it, you can take it back to your board, and, and I think it's something maybe we need to look at. But there again, on this particular thing, I, I will not change their decision that they voted, but maybe we need to look at a bigger sign.
Well, if we want to do that, we're going to have to.
Well, if we wanna do that, we're gonna have to not, uh, vote this up or down, but we're gonna have to table it.
But then they've already, their board already made the decision.
Well, then what are you, what are we gonna ask them to do?
Well, their recommendation was to deny.
Yes.
And based on the current reading of this, I personally have no problem with larger signage. But what I do have a problem with is the possibility of multiple larger signs.
Yeah. See, I, I live in the country. I don't have a problem driving down and, and finding the streets and going, but, but I, I, I hesitate to say that because I lived there all my life. And I do know people who come from Des Moines or someplace, uh, they get lost as soon as they get past, uh, Bondurant. But, um, um, if, if we're, if we're, if we're thinking about seeing what other counties are going to do. Or what, what other counties are already doing with larger signs, um, I don't think we can handle this, this motion either up or down.
If we would table it, it would basically sit there until we would bring it back, but they've already made the decision. The zoning board's already made the decision to deny it.
So if we deny it, uh, are we gonna put a caveat in there and say, uh, uh, the board adjustment's gonna have to, uh, study what other, what other counties are doing on their own?
I don't, I don't think you could do that in our motion. I don't, I don't.
I'm, I'm just trying to take what you were saying and, and putting, putting it into, into action.
Makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
So do I understand it right that, uh, Dave, you're not against it except for the multiple signs, but I can understand that.
I, I have, yeah, I've, I've got two issues, the multiple signs and making sure that they have proper setbacks. So that we don't have an issue where it becomes a traffic problem, especially at an intersection.
I agree with those.
You know, we've, we've got enough of that now in, in our agricultural areas.
Now, I think with the lease, uh, that stating in here that you have to have a lease agreement for every sign that you put up. Um, I think that might deter a little bit more than, you know, I, I don't wanna put ten signs up because that's ten leases I gotta have. And then that's ten payments I have to have.
Lots of times those are handshakes.
Well.
You know?
Um, it says right here.
I understand, I understand.
It says right there, we have to have a lease agreement. Uh, it can't be the good old boy handshake kinda thing because they can request a copy of the.
For, for me right now, there's, there's too many open questions.
It isn't, it isn't just the size of the sign.
No.
Now, now we got lease agreements, now we got.
Number of signs.
Number of signs.
We're just simple, people just wanna bigger sign for our business, but I understand what Dave.
Yeah, you know.
Just talking about, I understand that, I don't wanna see multiple signs either.
Because when I, when I travel up to Hardin County and go to juvenile detention, you know, I get up to where one seventy-five is and head to the west. There's numerous businesses along that road that are not agricultural related. Couple of them are, are automotive shops and they have four by eight signs out front. Um, I can't remember the exact name, but there they are and they're, they're very nicely done. But it's one sign in front of their business, not a half mile away.
I was down towards Pella in a, uh, flying blue truck, car wash, in the middle of the county. They're twelve miles, the, the town was twelve miles away. Very nice sign, so, but it was adjacent to their business.
All right, let's, 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 uh, let's decide what we want, what we need to do here and move this thing along.
Okay.
We've got, we've got, there again, so many issues, but I understand what they're saying, but I also understand what our, what the zoning board's saying.
Exactly.
Wouldn't it be a recommendation to either accept or deny what was currently in front of us? And then I would probably recommend maybe doing an amendment or another change to the board with the changes.
As, as long as they can go back to your commission on this.
Because it would be a new amendment, correct, John? If it was changed in the verbiage and stuff, it would be something new to them.
You're being asked to ask on, to act on this specific request?
Right, but if they wanted to, they could put to your board a new amendment with the new information, what they were just discussing.
The board doesn't need to deal with any of that.
No, I know that, but I'm talking about what they can do.
Right, right now, what we've got on the table is accepting or denying the recommendation from the zoning commission. In its, in its current.
In its current ordinance that we've currently got.
Right.
Now, if he goes back, is he gonna have to pay another, what was it, two hundred dollars for them to look at this again?
Every time you go up on the board, it's two hundred dollars.
Correct, there are fees for the publication and the, yeah, notice in the paper.
Okay.
All that kinda thing, that's part, providing their packets, that's part of what the two hundred dollars is for.
Okay.
All right, we got a motion.
You know, it's been a while, you wanna reread my motion or you want me to state it?
No, I can reread it. Um, motion by Thompson, second by Patton to accept the recommendation of the zoning commission, which is to deny their request of an amendment to zoning ordinance number three.
All right, any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Grebendar.
Yes. Thank you. And there again, now, now I guess we start over again. You guys start over again, but, but that's the right procedure?
I have one, one question. Um, I had requested help from, uh, John as the commissioner of that board to help us with this ordinance to eliminate this situation. Clearly, this was not done. Um, with his, uh, uh, decision to the board in his opinion, states right here, in his opinion of a zoning administrator. That the amendment would directly contradict the ordinance. So if I were to go ask someone to lend me a hand and they turn around and do the opposite. Is it fair that we have to pay again to go through the same situation with more than likely the same results?
Marty Weimor is not the individual to write ordinances for the county.
I, we have used him, uh, as a city entity and a fire chief. He has assisted in multiple, uh, ordinances for us and the county association. So I chose him to get the basic information. I told John, since he had the realm of, uh, what Marshall County allowed, to assist us with that. Um, there was no assistance done. And basically it counteracted, contradicted everything that I was told.
I think I just talked to him about that myself.
Yes, you can.
Absolutely.
In discussing all of this with Tom, we talked about this many, many times for long conversations. And in all of that discussion, when he asked if I would help him with this, I said, it's my job to make sure this goes through the process correctly. At no point, at no point, did my indication of helping mean it would pass. That's not my job.
Or fail.
No, all I indicated was that it would be done that way. And my opinion was stated that in my, in my opinion, the zoning ordinance would be directly contradicted by adopting this ordinance. That was my opinion, it's not whether this is a good idea or a bad idea. I, my job is to tell the zoning commission what the ordinance says and what any change to it would do. When the ordinance specifically says, don't do X, and you want to do X, that's a direct contradiction of the ordinance. That was the opinion that I gave, that the ordinance itself would not allow for this change to be made. Now, if he took it to mean that I was going to get this done for him, I don't do that. I don't make sure things get done and I don't make sure they, things don't get done. I take it through the process, it's the zoning commission's decision what they do or don't do, as is my board of, of adjustment. Or in this case, your decision what gets done.
John, the ordinances actually come from the supervisor, correct?
They're.
And they're given, they're given to, to your board and to interpret situations from the ordinance.
The zoning ordinance itself was originally written by a zoning commission. And then promulgated to the, the board of supervisors for final approval.
Yes.
So that's how the legislation is actually arrived at. And then any changes go through the zoning commission and they recommend to the board what they should do with that change.
I think what, what came out today is, is a clear sign from, from this particular board that this is an issue we'd like looked at, um, through your board. And maybe at their next meeting, they can come up with a different ordinance that addresses some of the concerns that were brought up to here today. Not only by the three board members here, but the business people that are present. Specifically, the, the number of signs, uh, placement of, of signs, you know, distance away from, from property. You know, I, as a business owner, fall right in between on this. I, I wanna make sure that we have safety issues covered, but also that we don't have a million signs out in the, in the county.
And, and that's not our, that's not where we're going.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, number one, I'm not gonna.
It's just the way this was written.
Right.
I can't support.
And it unfortunately is, it is kinda vague. Um, and that's where we were hoping that we could get some.
We went to the next step.
Resolution, yeah.
You know, and I wasn't at the zoning commission, so I was just gonna level with Thompson, but, you know, it's, I feel we're not gonna get any more of them. I really don't. I invite you guys or anyone else, go buy some of these businesses, you're the locals.
We, we go buy them all the time, Scott.
And I imagine you did stop in and see them.
Well, I'm on, I'm on the way to Haverhill for pizza night.
Okay, moving right along.
On the way back.
Thanks, John. Thanks, John, thanks, guys. We will skip item number nine and move on to item ten. This is a request for subdivision variance from Aura Whitaker family, Aura Whitaker family trust and Darlene Whitaker family trust. And John, is there anything you wanna, wanna say on this one? Or I think it's pretty well self-explanatory, um, on the parcels of it, the sections, the townships. Um, I could read all that, nobody still know where everything is at, but, uh, I'd almost entertain a motion. This was kinda, I don't see Mr. Danielson here, so.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to, uh, accept the division variance to Article Three, Section Three of the plotting. And subdivision ordinance and allow the plot of survey to be filed in lieu of a subdivision. The property involved is southeast quarter of the southeast quarter. And, uh, EX parcel A in southeast quarter and the southeast quarter of, all in section seven township eighty-four north, range twenty west of the fifth prime area of Marshall County, Iowa.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
All right, no motion, and a second, any discussion?
Uh, I, I see what these people are doing. I understand what they're doing. They're trying to make this work, uh, for the kids and, and, uh, and, uh, not have a, a dissolving of, of the family.
It's a trust, it's a trust.
It's a trust deal, and I, and I, uh, I have the same feelings about my own place, so I, I understand what they're doing.
Okay. All right, we got a motion and a second followed by discussion, roll call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Grebendar.
Yes. Moving on, item number eleven, proposed security camera project. Mike Schlessinger, publisher and general manager of the Times Republican newspaper is here to discuss a proposed security cameras project for Marshall County Crime Stoppers. It's good to have all the crime stoppers here with us this morning.
Thank you for this, uh, opportunity to speak to the board. Uh, I'm the publisher of the Times Republican, but I'm here wearing a different hat today with the Marshall County Crime Stoppers. And, uh, our local crime stoppers committee was formed about a year ago. And because of that crime stopper tip line and text line that we've had, we've had a hundred and eighty-five, uh, tips come in to help local law enforcement in the past year. Uh, just to put that in perspective, we patterned our group after the eight, the Story County crime stoppers. In their first year of existence, they had twenty-eight, wasn't it, twenty-eight tips come in. So we've had a hundred and eighty-five, so it's, it's, uh, some of those things have helped our law enforcement solve a lot of crimes. However, even as successful as that tip and text line has been, uh, we've looked at other ways to help law enforcement. And that's what I'm here to talk to you about today. Uh, first of all, this is about security cameras, I wanna underscore that it's security cameras, it's not speed cameras. I know that there's some controversy around the state on those, so this is security cameras that we're talking about. In September of this year, our, uh, board, uh, discovered some information on security cameras in the city of Dubuque. And so we did some research on that and found out that in Dubuque, they started off with about a dozen cameras there along their riverfront area. They're having vandalism problems. And today, they actually have over twelve hundred, uh, security cam, cameras around the community of Dubuque. And when we were doing our research on this, lo and behold, we found out that the company that's responsible for putting up all those security cameras in Dubuque is our own Marshall Town's Raycom. And so they're the ones that put them up, they install them, they did all the, uh, the, uh, monitoring of them, the maintenance of them and so on and so forth. And so, um, at this time, what I'd like to do is I'd like to introduce Ken Fleeg, who actually is the person at Raycom that monitors all of those twelve or fourteen hundred cameras in Dubuque. And he has, uh, some information to show you. I've also put out on your, uh, handed out to you a, a copy of some information that we requested from Raycom that would get us started, uh, so to speak, on a starter set for cameras. Uh, Dubuque started with about twelve, we're suggesting we start with about nine cameras. There'd be three locations, we would put three cameras at each of the three locations. Uh, the cost for this is the, uh, the back room startup, which has your server and all the software and all that type of stuff is on that sheet, it's all outlined. It's, uh, roughly fifty-seven thousand dollars. And we've made a proposal to the city of Marshall Town where crime stoppers would be, uh, helping to fund this. Uh, we would raise privately about a third of the cost, so roughly twenty thousand dollars. Uh, and we're, we're respectfully suggesting to the city and the county that they would come up with the other third each. And, uh, what, what this is, is this is a, uh, system that will actually grow. The way it happened in Dubuque is that they put them up on the riverfront and the crime went away. The crime moved to a different location, so then they put up cameras there and then the, the crime keeps on moving. So the cameras do work, it does move your crime to different areas, and so that's why it keeps proliferating. What we're suggesting here in Marshall Town is that it'll be a public-private thing. There will be plenty of businesses who will be interested in putting up cameras, tying them into the network. Law enforcement will have access to those and be able to, uh, do all the monitoring. So it would be a, uh, initial investment on the city, county, and crime stoppers. But we think that a lot of the proliferation and further outreach of those cameras will be done privately through, uh, businesses, putting them up and tying into the network. And this system is expandable, and that was one of the criteria that we asked for Raycom. But I'll turn it over to Ken, he has.
What are the three locations, Mike?
Well, we're actually, we're actually looking to start on what I guess I would call pinch points. Where people come into or leave, uh, Marshall Town. And, and they would probably be located most likely on the, uh, Center Street viaduct, the Third Avenue viaduct and the Sixth Street as a suggestion. And I don't know those would be the exact locations, but if we had them in those locations, these cameras are so powerful, and he'll show you some examples of this. That you can pick up license plate recognition and everything else. So if somebody committed a crime in, say, Newton, and they knew they were headed towards Marshall Town. We would be able to look through that camera, find that license plate. When it came into the city of Marshall Town, we'd know they're here. So there's a lot of advantages of these types of security cameras. And Ken will give you some examples on how Dubuque has solved some amazing crimes quickly, uh, in a short period of time when they've done that there. Um, I'd like at this time, just to let him show you a little bit of this information.
Yep.
Ken?
Thanks, Mike. I'm gonna fire my computer back up here. It's working. Again. So I'm gonna show maybe a little, um, just a little powerpoint of how we kinda got things. So I'm gonna show maybe a little, just a little powerpoint of how we kinda got things started here in Dubuque. So I kinda just wanna, as Mike was saying, I have a little history and a little story of Dubuque. I've been there since ninety-eight. In fact, I live in Wisconsin, born and raised, so I appreciate the tie and the, and the coffee cup, go Badgers. And, and so, how to kinda get that in there right away. So with the city, I think that Raycom in the Dubuque area is probably a lot like Raycom in the Marshall County area. We maintain all of the nine-one-one stuff for the county, so their nine-one-one phones and radios and their paging. And when they, the city actually came to us to provide a solution for the riverfront, because they had no infrastructure along there when they built it. And we came up with a wireless option to get these cameras in, and, and we got it done quickly, and it was, crime was solved right away. I mean, instantly. Got the, got the kids causing all the problems and got those pictures into school and it stopped. So that got the city thinking about other stuff. So what I'm trying to show you is what the city did, and I started it in two thousand and six and seven, and we're growing it today. It's hard to show all that to you quickly, so I picked out a couple of things that I think are important and just kinda run through them. One is how the technologies change and the usability of the camera. It's not just security. It can be, the same camera that you use for security can be used other departments for, for all kinds of things. So I'll kinda run through that and show that to you. So a good example of this camera, and so this camera's located on Highway fifty-two. So it's a highway, a highway that goes through town, so there's a lot of traffic, through town traffic. And the technology of this camera, this camera's actually placed about three hundred feet away from what you're looking at now. And we're using zoom lens, like binoculars on the cameras, to zoom down. So originally, this camera went up as, it, it's counting traffic for the engineering department. So it's counting southbound and northbound traffic. The camera has a little analytic running in it, and every time a vehicle drives by, it counts it. There's a log stored and engineering uses it. Of course, all of these cameras that the city has are also piped into their dispatch center. And dispatchers aren't required to use them, but they are. They're using all thousands of them all the time. So an example of this video that I'm gonna play, there's a, there's a gas station all around the corner you can't see, and that Equinox is writing bad checks. And they gave a description of the vehicle, but nobody could get a plate number. So with dispatch, just quickly running back through it when the call came in, able to, you know, grab, grab the plate of a vehicle and, and have that information real quick. So the power of the camera to be available that quickly and to have the technology that shows that is great. Also have dual purpose, that the engineering department's using it and we're also using it for security. That's a newer version camera, and that camera was put up in the, the spring of this year. So kinda the, the, this is the, where the technology's going now. All network-based, so it can be available to anyone. And please stop me if you have any questions while I'm going through this. I only gotta kinda-
What would happen if a car went the other way?
If the car went the other way?
Yeah.
Well, we have cameras looking, looking down the, the Highway fifty-two coming back through central. I'm just picking out one or two cameras. There's, you know, with the schools and the county and the city, there's about fifteen hundred total cameras that are in the Dubuque area and county area. Yep, and I'll touch on that a little bit here. So here's an example of a simple intersection, which is what I think we're thinking about doing in Marshall Town. Now, this is more set up on Highway twenty, and it's, there's network along Highway twenty for their connected signals. But the, these cameras went in in two thousand and eleven, so they're a little older, and you'll see as I play it here. But something like this, the video here was used in a, there was a semi, fully loaded semi that ran a red light smashed into a vehicle and requests for exports from both insurance agencies. From PD used it to, PD used it to, you know, for their ticketing, and then also engineering uses it to study safety at the intersection. So cameras that are used for multiple things. So the reason why I'm showing you this technology and the one before is that as, as this started building and growing, the city had a, a great idea. And it hasn't, hasn't gone anywhere yet, but it's been proposed. So if the city has this great technology outside on the streets, they were thinking about, when we have an incident, we can tell the story of where it happened. They go into a place of business, we don't know what happens. And then they come back out and we pick the story back up. So the city's entertaining the idea, if you own a liquor license, that the city and county would be thinking about subsidizing a camera system for your business. A good camera system. The problem is, is most private businesses put in a pretty low-end camera system, and it's not a very good usable image. And if they could get images that are quality like this and have access to it with permissions of the business owner, that then they could really paint a story of an individual and what happened to lead up to an incident and then what happened afterwards. So that's kinda how they're thinking outside the box right now, and, because they've got twelve hundred, fifteen hundred cameras, what do we do next? As, as Mike was saying, yeah, crime, it has definitely solved crime. It has definitely moved the crime, but we're putting cameras up to keep moving it away. We put up a lot of general cameras, and then in the pinch points, put up really good cameras.
What is this expandable to, camera-wise?
It's unlimited. The software, the software is not limited to any amount of cameras. Just add hardware and just keep adding the cameras in.
More servers and things?
More servers, yep. I've, I've seen the city of Denver's system, and they're around two thousand cameras, and it kinda helped us grow Dubuques in the, in the way we wanted to. Unique about Dubuque is it's the continuity of Dubuque. It's all one network, whereas Chicago, a great example, they have like twenty thousand cameras, but they're grouped in, in small groups, so not one place you can view all of them. And I don't know if you'd need to, but Dubuque's having them all together has helped. Between the schools and the county and the city, it's been, it, it really paints the picture for, for the city. Next slide. This is, this one's kinda interesting. So I told you that we're such a great, you know, Raycom's a part of the public safety network, and the, and we brought this video into dispatch, and they have these big screens, just like you guys have here. And we actually heard this call go out over the radio for this gentleman here that just in the wrong place at the wrong time. So we hear the fire call go out over the radio, and we hear Amy, the dispatcher, had the video up instantly and said, "You're gonna be responding for upper right, upper right shoulder pain." And it was, it was the first time, really, I made that connection that, wow, this video has really been brought into, into the public safety type of network. Now, when I talk to officers, especially new ones, they're saying, "I want my radio to work, I want my mobile data to work, and I want my video to work." And then what we're growing up in right now and the way the times are, videos, uh, video's kind of a big thing. So this is similar to what I think Marshall Town wanna do, just a downtown observation camera. So it's pointed down the street, sees the sidewalks, sees the businesses, and if there is an issue, something happens at a business, we can back it up and, we can back it up and bring that video back and try to find out what happened. I got two left here. So on, on this guy, this is, uh, this is taking the cameras inside. So we've got a parking ramp. Cameras were put up in twenty-ten. That lady, the guy in the bottom here, they're, they're looking for him. And you can see he takes off in the, uh, he's gonna take off right there in the upper middle. And we're painting this story for the officer. These officers in lower right see it, run after him. Then we go out to the street, we get a street camera. And you can see the guy will run out and officer does this thing, and it's, and, and they call and request, "Can you pull this video? We wanna see exactly what happened." And so as you can see in the bottom timeline, the video's almost about forty minutes long altogether. I'm just showing a clip of it. But examples again of how we put cameras inside and then bring them into the street and kinda piece them all together. Any questions?
And who monitors, like, who would monitor our cameras that we would have? Wouldn't go through the comm center, would it?
So to get them started, Diddy, we offered, we got, we got a bunch of servers, and we need a big internet connection to access those. And so to start it, I offered we'd store them in our building, because probably the natural place for them to go is in the new combined police and fire station when that's built. So if the city wanted to start that, we'd just donate the space and the internet and the power and all that stuff until the police, the new police comm center's built, and that's probably the place where they, where they ought to go in the long term.
Yeah, the technology is great. It's, you get all the video back to a server, it stores there, and then all you need is a laptop, a computer, or anything with a network connection back to that server or network or multiple networks, and it's all secure permissions. So you can give people rights to see certain cameras and not see certain cameras. So you can do pretty much anything. It's expandable to whatever configuration you want.
There's, there's a couple, I've been amazed at the number of crimes, both big ones and little ones, that these have helped solve. A year ago, there was a, was it a year ago there was a murder?
Yep.
You got that?
Yep, right here.
Okay.
So this is a sad one. A year, a little over a year ago, the Joan on the bottom left there, she was assaulted at about four in the morning, and the guy on the right actually ended up ending her life. It happened right there in the steps in the top right. And I got a little article clipping of it. I know you can't read it. But this happened at about four in the morning, and somebody saw her laying there about four-thirty, so a half hour afterwards. So officers and dispatch, they instantly went to a camera where that was at and just started browsing back right away to see any activity. Sure enough, whole thing was caught on, on video. And so because of that, because of the video there in the top left, it's not of this, but it's that camera, they were able to track that person leaving their house, what happened at the incident, where he went to next, and it was a matter of forty minutes. They had knocked on the door, got him in custody, played the video, got a confession, and it was done. And the police chief, Mark Dolcing, up there, who I, I know really well, I mean, he's, he said on record multiple times, no way we'd have solved that case like we did without that video, to see where he came from, where he went, and, and then using this in court. So it's powerful stuff. The city, I, I'm involved in, in the city a lot, and the public support is huge for this. They, everybody likes it. No one's getting, like Mike said, no one's getting a ticket from it. No, there's no, no revenue funding coming in on these cameras. It's, uh, it's simply just observation and security. And, and with the experience I gained there, I, I've done this in other places now and got them started, and so I thought I'd show you kinda what we're doing.
You know, little, little things too. You know, a guy will get a ticket for Mount Vernon Seabiscuit, and he'll come in and he'll complain at City Hall, you know, "I was wearing my seatbelt. This guy is harassing me." And so they'll pull up the video, and sure enough, you know, when officer pulls him over, he's got a seatbelt on. They backed the camera up about two blocks before when the officer picked him up. No seatbelt. And so, so this video sort of eliminates all those sort of little nuisance kind of complaints that, that cities get.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's not, and being so involved with it by, you know, initially designing it and doing the actual install and then doing the maintenance on it, the city is at about fifteen hundred exports for the year. That means fifteen hundred requests to pull video, which is a lot. And it's everywhere from just a simple fender bender to a door ding to my mirror got knocked off. So they're used for all kinds of stuff. And, and, and it's where we're growing it right now.
Do they charge for that, Ken?
Yeah, yeah, right now the city-
I was gonna say you'd almost have to, because if I got a door ding, you couldn't afford to spend that.
Yeah.
At that point, I wasn't thinking the county needed to put any money in it, because all the city was gonna be using it.
We got, yes, twenty-five dollars is what they charge now. I know that that's being discussed as well. It was mainly the city's network and the traffic network and the school, but with county involved now at their road shop, we have cameras at the road shop, their ad, admin building, their annex, the elections, and courthouse, and their Sunny Crest nursing home. There's ninety of them up there, which has been extremely helpful for that. And so we, the biggest thing was we got all of these city entities on the same software. If you're on the same software, then it's just really easy to plug them into the same network and, and have access.
Where, where do you think we're going here as, as far as number for this facility?
If, if you would've asked me that ten years ago in Dubuque, I would've said we're probably done at about twenty cameras. If you guys decide to put these in and you run them for the first couple of months and you see what you see with them, yeah, I have a feeling it'll grow. I, I think you will budget continually every year, and you'll just throw a certain dollar amount at adding cameras, and that's how Dubuque did it, and it's, it, every place I've done it has, has loved it.
Does that, does that help, like, for example, the county, you know, we've got a lot of small communities within the county, Steve has to have patrol out there all the time. Does that help Dubuque county and all of the patrols?
So the request that we'll hear is, hey, I was tracking a guy on Highway twenty by Piazza, and he was coming into Dubuque fast. It was like a, a red Volkswagen. So sure enough, we hop on, we have cameras out in the county a little ways on twenty, and sure enough, you know, you see him come in Highway twenty, and we'll follow him all the way downtown, and he'll turn into a business or a parking lot, and we'll call on the radio, "Yep, that car's parked at X spot," and the county deputies drive right down to it. And we've heard that on the radio multiple times.
So you'll be able to expand this to like the Albians, the State Centers, LaGrands, and the rest of it?
It's expandable to any place we can get network, and now with technology, we can get network just about anywhere if we have some line of sight and, and be a little creative.
Are you approaching like the community college or the school systems on any assistance and funding also?
Yeah, I talked to Dr. Shudy, and he's very interested in networking his cameras in with the system that would actually enable them, police would be on the computers if there was an incident in a school or something like that, and they'd be able to tie in.
Okay, but how about funding-wise?
They've already got, the schools already have cameras, so it would be tying in with the network.
Okay, James, we can tie in. They already have access to our stuff at the comm center now, don't they?
They do, and I don't know what the compatibility was. We've got about, I think, twenty-five cameras here at the courthouse and over a hundred and some between our facilities.
Yeah, we can bring any, we can bring any model or make a camera in. There's a standard in the camera industry called ONVIF that allows it to communicate with IP software. And that's, that's the thing too, that we did, the county, the, the jail, we called the new jail built ten years ago. They have older cameras as well, and we're bringing those into this network now as, as well, so that now the county, the county jail and the admin area, everybody's on the same network, so that it's available to everybody, and we don't have to go to proprietary location to get this video, and then drive to this location to get this video. It's kinda the trend that Dubuque and the-
So our cameras are compatible? I mean-
Yeah, absolutely.
They're IP-based?
Yep. And, and even if they weren't, we can put an encoder on to make them IP-based, so. And any camera that's already installed can be put on the same software platform you see right in front of you.
Steve?
What's the quality comparison for the camera, cameras that you've been installing at the headquarters?
For internal here in the courthouse, we put up between two and five megapixels just for internal use.
Yep.
And then anything beyond that, we kinda scale up for outdoor plate reader purposes.
Yeah, so the same thing Dubuque, this is, so the one you're looking at here is nineteen-twenty by ten-eighty. It's HD. It's three and a half megapixel with a, a lens on it, and that's kinda the standard now is, what was said to me by Dave Ness, the engineer, said it's not, it's not, if you can't put a camera, if you put a camera up that you can't see nothing with, you might as well not put it up.
What's the life expectancy of these cameras?
Well, that, that's a good question, and it gets asked a lot. If you run this like an IT network, they'll tell you five years, let's start replacing. That gets pretty expensive. And so we've got cameras that I put in in two thousand and seven that we're still using. Yes, the tech, yes, the image isn't as great. Physically, the camera works fine. I think the replacement schedule is driven by technology, 'cause they're coming out with such great stuff that everybody wants a little better, and I want a little better, just like you upgrade from iPhone five to six to seven, kinda the same way. But we haven't had, we haven't had a lot of problems. As long as it's maintained like an IT network, it's been, they've been great.
So Mike, your, Crime Stoppers is proposing what?
Crime Stoppers is proposing for this initial starter set of these nine cameras, and then it's the software and the server that can be expandable. It's roughly sixty thousand dollars. Crime Stoppers would raise twenty thousand of that, or a third.
Third, go third, third, third.
The city would come up with a third, and the county would come up with a third, and then we would have the, the back door, I guess you would call it.
All the, all the backend.
And then all we have to do is add cameras anywhere we want, virtually, within the county. That can become part of that network.
Now, would, would the servers handle our cameras already?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have a server in Dubuque. We have four of them for traffic, and each one has a hundred, hundred cameras on them. So the servers are, are able to handle that. The technology there has come a long ways. It's not an issue anymore.
Steve, budget-wise? We're gonna have to find this if we go with it.
I know our office, and having mentioned the schools, there was a, a talk about FirstNet in Iowa being perhaps one of the first days to be involved in FirstNet. Does that tie in at all, any possibilities with the system?
I have not, I don't have any experience with that now. Everything that Dubuque has is either the schools, the county, or the city that are tied together. But when you look at the, when you look at the video, it's just a network. It's no different than a data network. It just happens to be video that's riding on it.
And what are the ongoing costs?
So for the, so nothing for the cameras, really, and unless you wanna put your camera replacement schedule in. But the software, if you, if you go with the software that we know real well called Milestone, there is a forty dollar per camera per year cost that is called SUP, which is Software Upgrade Plan. And that money goes back to Milestones, so that you have all the support from them and all of their upgraded software and drivers and, and their, and their entire package. That's really the only ongoing cost besides normal maintenance. Now, Dubuque handles theirs. Early on, early on, it was just, uh, we just maintained them and we put it as part of their, their- Early on, early on, it was just, uh, we just maintained them and we put it as part of their, their communications maintenance contract. And then it grew so big that it, it developed its own maintenance contract. So in Dubuque, Raycom takes care of everything in one contract and, um, we monitor them and we know if they're down or up and if the image is usable. And then we schedule the fixing and repair the schedules out, out of our office, so.
What about things like, like cleaning the domes and stuff like that if they're?
Yeah, so, um, unfortunately, we live next to the Mississippi, so mayfly season is ridiculous. And so, yeah, part of the maintenance contract that built Verbage in that says that we would clean these, these cameras twice a year, once after the mayflies in the spring and then again before winter. And it's, it's not difficult. Um, the ones that are out, out on the roadways, um, they kind of naturally get cleaned a little bit with the weather, but, uh, you know, salt spray gets on them and at some points we'll go out there and kind of clean them up. There is really no, companies are trying to make a cleaner, automated cleaner, but it, it's not really there yet, so.
So there is some maintenance stuff like that?
Yep, absolutely.
Any other questions? I guess, um, we'll, we'll get with Steve and when we get to the budget, budget talks and, and, and kind of go from there. How do you know where you, where you're gonna put, where you want, where you want to put these nine cameras? That, I mean, that, that's just a, I mean, how do you know what's, how do you know where to put them? How'd you know where to?
So, um, in Dubuque, it was all driven by the city manager and the police telling us where we had a lot of, uh, where a lot of incidents at. And then we would, you know, move cameras into that area and then solve what was going on there and then it would move to another spot. So we decided to start putting them wherever we could go. Infrastructure is a big thing, you know, you gotta get infrastructure to the place you want to put cameras and you can do that with wireless, microwave, fiber, copper, however you want to do it. The technology too, and I didn't show it up here, um, is now, um, hundred-and-eighty degree cameras. So you get three imagers in one dome, one cable. And so you put that at an intersection, you get all, all hundred-and-eighty degrees. You get great, see a vehicle coming and see it drag right through and you get everything with one connection to it. That technology just really kicked off early part of this year. We deployed twenty of them right away in June and we haven't had any issues since. And so now we're moving down that multi, the multi-sensor avenue of cameras.
If you, if we put it, like, put it in one area and after what, sixty days or so, you didn't see any, nothing happen there, would it cost us to have you move it to another location?
Well, yeah, it would. We would have to move the cameras and move the network to that location. I would think you would keep them and add, add on to, you know, add your footprint of video through town, through the county. And one thing I mentioned too in Dubuque, we record everything twenty-four seven, so ten frames a second, so ten still images every second of the day, um, twenty-four hours a day. And we're storing for about thirty-two days or so, we're keeping video, um, give or take.
I think we would also consult with, uh, Steve and Mike Tupper and get some input as to where anything, those initials places. I just came up with, uh, oh, the pinch points, you know, in the city would be the three, three bridges, but, you know, they, they would have a lot more input.
Sure, yeah, I understand.
Was the city going to do a financial contribution or part of it in, in kind?
We, we made the same presentation down, it would be ten, twenty in the morning, approximately, so fifty-seven or fifty-eight.
Well, this will give us some more stuff to talk about at budget time.
To address your concern about the placement of the cameras, excuse me, once the, the backbone or the infrastructure is in place, we've already had some interest expressed by some local businesses that want to be a part of the program. And it might be a situation where maybe a couple of businesses on Main Street want to fund a camera reasonably priced. And they could have a camera, if you want in each block of, of Main Street or down Center Street.
Six businesses called me already that they want to get, they want to put the cameras up. I said, we haven't even, but they want to put them now.
Well, let's play that hypothetical game for a moment. Inside or outside of their business and what would the cost be?
So I've come- Yep, uh, so in Dubuque, they ask the same thing. They ask you roughly, you know, what would it cost to put cameras up? So the quality of camera we're using, roughly twelve hundred bucks, then a license and then some storage on the backend. So the number we came up in Dubuque was if you want a camera, the whole, the whole deal would be like twenty-five hundred bucks. That gives you the camera, gives you the software, gives you the install, the license for the, uh, software and then storage on the backend. So that's kind of how we're budgeting in Dubuque. If they figure they want ten cameras at twenty-five hundred bucks apiece, then that's what they write in their budget for, for a budget number.
It's kind of intriguing with the mention of the places without all licenses, uh, maybe convenience stores offhand, which we oftentimes have brought associated with those and, and we have improvements with some businesses, but again, again, it's, again, having bad images is about as good as having no image. And, uh, you know, if you could, you have your relative there and not be certain that it was he or she. Uh, so that's intriguing as well as the, the prospect for robbery. And I would share that we've had high profile crimes such as homicide where part of our investigation strategy has been going to businesses that we are aware of that have, um, security cameras, um, in different, different avenues. And those have played into, uh, corroborating or dispelling people's claims about their whereabouts and, and help dissolve crimes. So having a, a network of quality cameras of usable information is intriguing.
Well, I mean, strategically placing a camera in an area could cover more than one business. You could have several businesses, yeah, they're not, a twenty-five hundred dollar camera to the point of, you know, five businesses, five hundred bucks and the whole block is secure and is safe and you've got that. And I can see that happening, you know, real fast once, once the system is put.
You know, something I didn't mention, and maybe I led on it quickly, but it got me thinking here too, is so in Dubuque, when we get network to a location where we want to cover a lot of businesses, we'll put, we have seven cameras in one location, seven of them. So you bring the infrastructure and it's a one-time cost. And then we use, you know, we use a, a ten to eighty millimeter lens. So even though the camera's mounted here, it doesn't start, you don't have a usable image until you're three or four hundred feet away. And then you get this great image and then you have one that's zoomed back underneath it so that you get the view coming up to that camera and then all the way out to that camera. So you can cover a large area with it. So, so there, the technology in that aspect has come a long ways where we can be creative. Yes, mounting of the cameras is probably one of the most important things. We used to mount up high, now we're finding out that we mount low, just, uh, twelve, thirteen feet, enough that kids can't hang on them. And if somebody does, all the net, all the video is stored back at another spot. So you're gonna find out who did it anyways. The usable image of down low is so much better. Faces, license plates, seeing into the vehicle, um, stuff like that.
Put those on like light poles?
Yeah, so if you had the mask arm come up, you know, with a light, with, with a traffic light, instead of being up on the lights, now we come down the side of the arm or normal street light poles, uh, we come down. We can be pretty creative. We actually had some of the housings powder coated to match the color of the light poles, so black light pole in the Millwork District, black cameras, aesthetically pleasing. We've been pretty creative with that, so.
What about residential areas? Have you lived in the residential areas too or?
Only, only kind of the overspill of the, of the video. So you got a camera looking at something and if it's supposed to be looking at roadway, but you see the residential down here, um, that's really as far as we've been. The city of Asbury, which is in the county, I just kicked off, we did the same thing. They just started their, they started their backend too, fifty thousand bucks. They budgeted right out and we'll do a server and six cameras and the software and we've got that in place now for them. They're gonna grow and eventually we're tying that into Dubuques. So now vehicles can drive through Dubuque to the town of Asbury in the county and have this fluid movement of video all the way out to the golf course, which is out in the county quite a ways. So, um, kind of working, working in those little towns as well.
Well, Mike, this is a good time to present this. We're just getting ready to start our planning process so we can work this in. And that's what we would, we would try to do, so.
Thank you guys for letting me present.
Mike, Mike, are you gonna be the one that gets on the pole and puts up the camera? I, I just thought maybe you and I wouldn't have as far to get up to the pole.
So how are we gonna talk our neighbors into footing the bill for the one on the corner of Sixth and Westwood?
Alrighty, moving on now to item twelve, public forum. Any public? Adam? Seeing no, yes, sir, Steve.
I mentioned this to Supervisor Patton already, but I brought my family up here on the Oktoberfest weekend with the courthouse tours. Brought my children up, took them up to the bell house and, and the watchtower and everything. And I want to publicly thank the three of you for your involvement in helping facilitate that event and our other elected officials that were here and, and other staffers that donated their time providing their tours for that day. And Deanne, I got the luxury of, of seeing her tour twice, Friday and Saturday. And also for our buildings and grounds for the exceptional work that they did in having this courthouse in a, um, in immaculate condition as a showcase for our community. It was really a, a prideful event for the, the community and I wanted to thank all of you.
Thank you.
We, we had mentioned before, Steve, that, that, you know, and first time in my years that I've seen all departments coming together for working for a program. And, you know, uh, like I say, buildings and grounds, Lucas and, and Bo, they did a great job and Lisa, she, she did a great job. Everybody just did a great job.
It's a long list of people that should be commended.
When you start naming them, then you worry about missing someone.
Yeah.
It was amazing. It was good enough for me to come back two days in a row and want to make sure that my children and their son-
How long have you been working for the county?
Twenty-five years.
And this is the first time you've come to the courthouse?
Hey, we, we threw a party and everybody came.
Just checking. Anything else for the good of the cause? If nothing, if nothing, then, uh, our next regular session meeting is scheduled for December thirteenth, twenty sixteen at nine AM. All business to back up on that session should be submitted to the county auditor and recorder's office or the board supervisor's office by Thursday, November eighth, twenty, anyway, right? Office by Thursday?
December.
December eighth, twenty sixteen at nine PM. Due to the thanks, due to the Christmas holiday coming up. There will be no further business to come before the board. Our meeting is adjourned at, uh, ten twenty-one.
Thank you very much, Jim. Thanks for coming.